Good afternoon and good evening, everyone. Today is July 21st. Public work session, the time is 4:09 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Per usual, we can rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Because it's a work session tonight, we do not have a public comment or the employee of the month section, so we'll begin with the board presentations. The first board presentation is It Takes a Village, presented by trustee Robin Brown. And then before we get to that, trustee Brown, I'd just like to make a quick remark about some activities on our beach. So first, I just wanted to thank both Kathy Sweeney as well as Matt Weeks, who help us run our beaches, as well as our highway department, who's been out there helping us rake our beaches. But it's been, it's come to our attention, as well as the attention of others in parks, departments, and other elected officials and other people in public safety. But an increase of what we're seeing from shark bites and shark attacks and the presence of sharks throughout the East End and throughout much of Long Island. So as such, I had a conversation with our acting chief of police, Lieutenant Herto, and we have two drones. We have one officer who was trained on drones, and so we're going to be, hopefully, deploying this officer to help us spot sharks and be in close coordination with our team at Cooper's. And then we'll be working with our team here to get other members of our various departments trained to use our drones. We may need to purchase an additional one if funding is available, because this is a lifesaving activity. It's something that other municipalities are doing, and we want to make sure that we are keeping our residents and beachgoers safe. So this is a program that will be rolling out effective tomorrow, and we'll be having our drones monitor our beaches and notify swimmers and bathers and other beachgoers in the case if there's any sharks. So just something I wanted to inform our residents of in that particular case. So with that being said, I will turn this over to trustee Robin Brown for It Takes a Village.
Thank you, Mayor. I must agree so much wholeheartedly, and that's pretty much an example of what the mayor is talking about, what I'd like to express to the village, which it takes a village, that it's not just one agency, it's not just the Board of Trustees, that it is us coming together as a village, making sure that initiatives and safety and other things of that nature are coming together for a positive impact for our village. What I'd like to do, and I want to thank the mayor and the board for allowing me to kind of be Robin and Flo, and I will be doing little updates as far as around town, what our residents are saying, what our different agencies are saying, and just bringing it to light what we as trustees are working to on these initiatives to bring a positive impact. I'm so glad the mayor spoke about the drones. We know that they were out the other weekend when we had the protest, the drones were out. And I want to thank the mayor and the trustees as far as the gator that was just purchased, because we know that safety is our first initiative as part of the village. We want to thank Matt and the dynamic team of professionals that we have at the Cooper's Beach, which we are proud to say is number three and soon to be back to number one with the help of the trustees and with their team doing such a great job. The gator, I'd like to explain to you, is part of the safety initiative that you hear more from as time goes on, as part of It Takes a Village. And the purpose and the reason why it was so important to have that, and once again, thank you, my board, for supporting this, is because we want to have safe evacuation, as the mayor said, that we're going to have our drones out there, and then we want to have safe and well expedited, if need be, evacuation for the beach. So this is all part of the campaign of It Takes the Village. We want to highlight our talent for that. And in that, let me just segue into the Climate Action Committee. This is what kind of spurred this idea for me of announcing that's taking the village. Climate Action Committee has done a great job, and as we know, that they were the ones that did the historic bike tour. During this historic bike tour, it came to my attention that there was not always the awareness of safety with helmets, not just with our young people, but with our adults. And I want to thank the Climate Action Committee, along with our police department that was there, giving instructions on safe wearing of the helmets. This also is part of safety initiative, along with the drones, along with the gator. We like to, we're not mandating, we're simply educating and asking our residents, asking our young people that have the ability to please wear helmets. I was very pleased to get an email from someone that took advantage of this education at the bike historic tour and learned how to properly secure their helmet. And by finding that out, a few days later, they were in a little bit of an accident, and they hit the concrete first on their forehead. But glad to say, because they were educated, their helmet was secure. There was not any fatality, there was not any damage to them. And these are just certain things. Of course, we are concerned about fiduciary responsibilities as trustees, but we are here to care about the total overall human aspect of our residents. And on that note, I'm going to also talk about our Southampton Youth Impact Committee. I had a young lady who approached me at the gala at Southampton Arts Center and expressing her interest in care of the village and wants to become more active in it. So I want to say this will be starting quite soon. It will be a young adult impact committee, and they'll be taking a look at the village and having, using this platform to be an asset to the village. So I want to commend them. I'm not going to release names at this time, but this is all part of this It Takes a Village. The other initiatives that I'm very much interested in are the opportunities in the arts and the village to stimulate our downtown area. There's some discussion on what we can do as far as different events and fairs that will stimulate the economy by bringing in, having it more attractive to our outside visitors, shall we say. Next would be our mentoring programs taught by leading people in the arts and business area. This year, we will go to be having our second be inspired, and that will be given by Peter Moreno for our young people. It was a huge success last time. Please know that Deputy Mayor attended last year. I hope the trustees will have tonight to extend a visit as well. And our young people sure did have a wonderful experience from being as far as. So we want to thank Peter Moreno for getting a second one. These are just some initiatives and things that we're going to be doing for our young people and for our seasoned citizens. We will be putting together some special gallery events for them as well. Last but not least, let me just take the time to give you an update on the electric bike. Once again, the electric bike will be for our police officers. It should be part of our safety initiative. Again, let me thank the mayor and the board for supporting this. This is a quite part, quite important to myself and I believe our trustees, because we're answering a concern of our residents. And one of the concerns is the safety that is have the unsafe driving happens that we're having with illegal U-turns, people trying to get into a parking space quickly, some of people that are not respecting our traffic control officers. And we understand that there needs to be support for them. We understand this, and by having this electric bike will allow for a much quicker response time to come to aid our traffic control officers, making sure that things are properly enforced, and therefore, we are having safe streets and not having any traffic fatalities or mishaps. So once again, this is just a little bit of It Takes a Village initiative. I'll be glad to be reporting on our next board meeting. Thank you so very much, my fellow trustees and mayor, for allowing me to have this time. Thank you, have a pleasant evening.
Thank you very much, trustee Brown. We'll keep moving tonight, and we'll have our second board presentation. And the second board presentation is by Park Mobile or from Ron Ross. And before Ron begins here, we'll have him as a speaker, and we may have the mayor of East Hampton, Jerry Larson, as a speaker here. One thing we'd like to potentially look into is there's a number of villages who use the paid parking, and that includes the village of East Hampton and the village of Sag Harbor. Both of those villages have been very successful on the rollout. They may have been met with some skepticism at first, but they were greeted with the successfulness of the program. However, I wanted to reiterate that this is simply a presentation so that we can learn more. And if we were to roll this out, we might test this with a short-term, 30-day-or-so pilot program in one specific parking lot behind Village Hall and Rite Aid, and only that parking lot for now, if we were to move forward. But at this point, we will, we'd like to hear from Park Mobile. That's the parking app that the village of East Hampton uses. And again, I can talk more a little about my conversations with other elected officials regarding this. But again, this is simply a presentation for a potential pilot program for one specific parking lot. So with that being said, I will turn that over to our village administrator and clerk to see if Ron is available. Okay. Ron?
Yeah, hello, how are you?
We're good. How are you, Ron?
Good, good. Thank you for having me present tonight. I wish I could have done it by Zoom, but I'm still trying, so I apologize for that. But I wanted to quickly introduce myself. My name is Ron Ross. I'm the Northeast Sales Manager for Park Mobile. Park Mobile is a mobile payment app, right? So instead of using meters or kiosks, customers could pay for their parking using the Park Mobile app. I'll be brief tonight, but what I'll do after, tomorrow morning, I'll send Charlene a PowerPoint that she could share with everyone, and that might generate some more questions. But I'll put everything in the PowerPoint that I talked about tonight and more. So that might be helpful too. But quickly, about Park Mobile, we are the largest payment provider in the country. We have 36 million users currently, and we have over 6 million users in New York and New Jersey alone. So we're the largest app in the country, and in fact, we're owned by Easy Park out of Stockholm, and with them, we are the largest in the world. But so quickly, what Park Mobile is, it's an app on your phone, and when you open up the app, you download the app. When you go to pay for parking, you'll see a map-based interface. So you'll be looking at the exact street that you're on, on a map-based thing, so you can see if there's a Dunkin' Donuts nearby, you'll see that. You'll see the zone number, so you don't have to type in the zone number, because we issue zone numbers for customers to pay in that zone. And I heard something about a parking lot that you guys want to trial this then. That parking lot would probably have one zone number for itself, and you would be able to pull in there, open up the app, press on that zone number, and start processing your parking transaction. Obviously, you need to put in your credit card payment and your license plate number, but that's it, and then, and it's a quick process. The second time you go in, it's even quicker, because you don't have to put in your credit card at that time. So we can set up any kind of rates that you would need in that zone, whether you wanted to do a dollar an hour, or $2 an hour, or $5 for three hours. We can do any, any type of setup programming that you want in any zone that you have. Having multiple zones in different places allows you to track really where people are parking, how much money you're making there. We have a back office called Park Mobile 360 that is an analytic portal, and you can look at that anytime you want, and it tells you almost in real time what's happening in your parking operation. You can send automatic emails weekly, or daily, or monthly to you through that Park Mobile 360, so you can always track what we're doing. And I'm jumping around quickly, but on the, basically what we do is we, we would be the person that processes your credit cards as well, right? So we would collect all of the parking revenue, and on the 15th of every month, we would electronically transfer all of your net revenue back to the village. Something important to say there is there's no upfront cost to the village to bring Park Mobile onboard. All the signage is included. You guys would install the signage and stickers, but we would include them all free. And we also have something that's included with the package that's called End Force. And on your, on anybody's cell phone, on an iPad, on anything like that, you can log into our system and see all the license plates that are actively paid in any zone that you want to enforce. So that's, that's the brief version of Park Mobile. But we've been around for 12 years, and like I said, we're the largest in the country. And you can use Park Mobile not only in your village, but there's many cities and towns throughout New York that have Park Mobile currently. And, you know, like I said, there's no upfront cost, and we can bring it into you in 30 to 45 days, depending on how quickly you'd like to implement Park Mobile.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and that's really brief, and I can, if we're in person, I can go deeper and deeper into it. The PowerPoint will share a little bit more for you. I'm just trying to be brief for your meeting tonight, but if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them, or you can, you know, get me your questions after you look at the PowerPoint that I sent Charlene tomorrow.
Thank you very much. I'll turn this over to questions or comments from board members in a bit. I just want to reiterate a few things, and then we have the mayor of East Hampton, Jerry Larson. I just wanted to again reiterate, this is something that we are having a presentation on tonight. No action is being taken today. If we were to try a pilot of this for one specific parking lot, the way this would work is that we would model this after East Hampton Village, where people or parkers would get at least two hours of parking for free, just like they currently get now. And instead of getting a ticket at the third hour, they'd be able to use this app to add time to their parking spot. So it would be a way to actually make the lives easier of those who are shopping around the downtown and using our village parking facility not harder. So again, two hours of parking will be free. The app will not even be needed for those two hours. But again, like the village of East Hampton, which I believe offers three hours of parking for free, again, there will be a way for residents, or tourists, or those who are visiting to add time to their parking spots to make things easier. So if we move forward, that will be likely the case. So we want to make that very clear, that this is not a mandate or anyone who would like to park for an hour or two. But with that being said, before we go to board members, I'd like to turn this over to Mayor Jerry Larson, because I, we'd like to get his take on how this is working over in the village of East Hampton.
I don't have Mr. Larson. I have a phone number. That could be him.
That could be him. We did send him the Zoom link. If not, while we're getting from, then we, let's, let's go to comments from board members. Does anyone have any questions or comments or concerns for Ron?
I'm on, I'm on, Jesse.
All right, Jerry, how you doing?
Good, how you doing? Thanks for having me.
Our pleasure. So maybe you could tell us, oh, sorry. Go ahead. Maybe you can tell us a little about how it's, how it's going in the village of East Hampton.
Yeah, so I listened to the presentation, and I heard your comments. And, and I have to tell you, we, we started the program last May of 2021, and we rolled it out, and it, it really has worked well. We chose Park Mobile because they're very popular in New York City, and most of our clientele is, same as your clientele, are, a lot of them are from New York City. So we thought that would be the simplest, easiest way for people to be familiar with what we were doing. Park Mobile came out, they gave us the signs. Everything was really simple, as the gentleman said in his presentation. It worked just like he said it was going to work, which, as you all know, it's not always the case. But it has worked great for us. We're a little different than you are over there. You have that huge parking lot behind your shopping center, and we don't. We have a very small area of about 200 cars, and that's our big lot. And what was, the complaints we were getting is that we only had a two-hour parking limit, and it wasn't enough time for people to enjoy themselves if they were eating and shopping, or they were in a hair salon, or something like that. They, they didn't have enough time. So we came up with the idea of leaving the two hours, and we used to have little tickets that you had to get at the entrances and put them on your windshield. So we're able to get rid of all of that, and you get two hours for free. And then if you choose to purchase the third hour, it's $10 for a third hour. You cannot purchase a fourth hour. And it's been working really, really well, and we've made our revenue side of things last year, just for the parking lots, was $59,000 from May to. We only run until September 15th, so it was just for those few months. And so far this year, it's up to $36,000, just for those extra hours, which is, it's, it's a, it's a win-win, because we're, we're making the extra money, but we're also providing a really nice service for people. And we don't have any parking regulations at night. I'm not familiar with yours. So night times, none of that's in effect. It's only until 5:00 PM. We also found other applications for it, which were really huge for us, which is our train station. So now we can have, without issuing permits, we can have people just park and pay for the daily parking at the train station. Same as our, our daily beach permits at, at two of our beaches. You no longer need an attendant to issue daily parking passes. You can just have people pull up, and they see the sign, and they do it themselves. And that's been another huge success for us. So we're really happy with Park Mobile.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
My only question, Mr. Mayor, is Roy Stevenson, trustee here. So how does the police, how do you monitor those who come in and stay for three hours but don't use Park Mobile? How do you keep track of that?
Well, we have, just like we used to do with TCOs, where we'd walk around and put chalk on tires. Now we have a, a system in a car. It's a computer system with a camera on it. I'm sure you have something similar over there, that just goes through the parking lot and logs in all the plates. And then as they come back through in two hours, if there's any cars that are still there with the same plate, then they are ticketed, or the officer gets out and is able to see if it has a Park Mobile, or is able to log into Park Mobile to see if it has a, has a pass. So it's been working really well. I mean, ideally, what we'd like to do is put cameras at each entrance to the parking lot and be able to log the cars in and log them out, and then we wouldn't even need the manpower to walk around and check that, or drive around and check it. They also make a backup system, which is a handheld, so your traffic control officer can just use it as a scanning device on the car. So if the car, if your scanning vehicle goes down, you can still deploy these handheld ones to, to check the cars. It really works well, and what we did over here, all village residents get three hours for free. So they don't even have to, our residents don't even have to deal with any apps at all.
That's excellent.
And the monitoring, sorry, Mr. Mayor, trustee Arista here. Thank you for joining us today. So that equipment is also provided by Park Mobile, the, the monitoring equipment?
No, I think that's through a company called Vigilance, which I, I know you have that system as well, because we were exploring that. We, I know we talked to one of your lieutenants over there about it, who handles that system. But I think Park Mobile could probably speak better to that with how that works. I'm not really sure how the, the inner workings work.
Okay. So you spoke about your revenue. Did this cut back on your ticket, the money that you bring in with the parking tickets?
You know, it's funny, because it hasn't. You would think it would, but it hasn't. So it's, it's a, you know, I was hoping, because I was hoping it would, because it's just a friendlier way to, to deal with business rather than slapping somebody with a, you know, an $85 parking ticket after they've just spent the day in your village, you know? But it hasn't cut back. We're still issuing a lot of summonses.
Well, so that, so that's almost a win-win for the village.
Yeah. Yeah, that was one of, yeah, one of our trustees was worried about losing the ticket revenue, but I was, I would rather lose it on that end and make it on something more friendly. And that was our goal, because that's all we ever hear from our, our storekeepers over here is that it's just so unfriendly, you know? And it's like the, the traffic officers are just out there and just hammering away, you know? And it's, it's just not a friendly appearance.
So I have another question concerning the, the village residents. You said you don't charge your village residents. How do you differentiate? How is that done? Is that done through something that Park Mobile sets up, or?
That, that's a, that's a great question, because I forgot about that. But if they have a resident village beach permit, then their car is logged into the system, so when the officer goes and scans the car, it, it doesn't, you know, it's, it's approved. So they can never have overtime parking, and they also get free parking at our, at our, at our train station. And they all, they already have the beach permit for the beach, so they're kind of exempt once they register their car with their beach permit. They kind of have free run of the village. It's really nice. It really works well.
Okay. Thank you very much.
No, no problem. And if they don't want a beach permit, they would still have to come in and register their car.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
One last question. How extensive does the signage have to be in order to explain to people who don't live in New York, wherever, how to do it? Is it, you have to have like a big billboard with lots of words on it? How, how easy is it to explain to the people as they drive in what they need to do?
It's pretty, it's pretty simple. I mean, it, there's, basically, you put them in areas, like we put them at the entrance to our parking lot, then we put a couple on the light poles in the parking lot. And we haven't really received many complaints. The first year we did, because people didn't understand, because they've been coming here so long, and all of a sudden, there was something new. So there were complaints. We haven't received any complaints this summer so far. So people understand it now, once, once they learn. But the signage is not horrible. It's, you know, and it's conspicuously posted. So I don't think it's, I don't, I mean, if you take a ride over our village and take a look, it's, I don't think it's terrible.
And Ron, one question for you. Does, does Park Mobile get a flat fee? Is it a percentage of the revenue? How do you guys make money?
There's, there's two different ways. The first way is the customer pays a convenience fee, right? So if your, if your parking was a dollar per hour, Park Mobile's convenience fee would be 35 cents, and the customer would pay a dollar thirty-five, and they, the 35 cents would go to Park Mobile. If, if Park Mobile is also going to be your credit card processor, which I recommend, and it's seamless, and it's, it's just as cheap as using anybody else, but you get it all in the one system, there is another fee that is 3% plus 20 cents of the transaction. So that comes from the village's revenue. But 3% of a dollar is 3 cents.
You'd be paying it to any credit card processor.
Right, that's a, right, it's a credit card processing.
Right, it's just credit card processing fee. And really, we pass that on, that's just covering for us. We pass that right back on to who does the credit cards for us. But that, that's the fee that would come from the village. The convenience fee would come from the parking customer. And there's no, like I said, there's no upfront cost to do that. So there's so much more to talk about. So you can, you can use Apple Pay, you can use Google Pay. We're integrated with every parking revenue control system out there in every, every credit card processor, and we can, we're just trying to make it convenient for your customers and, like I said, you'll get your revenue and send to you, net revenue on the 15th of every month with reports to help you track the revenue.
Thank you.
I would, I would say one more thing, and this, this is just from what, from my experience through Park Mobile is the first two hours free is very durable. We can set it up any way you want. If you're going to be making changes to your parking right now, this is the time to consider, you know, whether you want to charge for the first hour or two. It's just something that you would do all at the same time, and that's just a recommendation that I have got from other municipalities, that's all.
All right, thank you, Ron. Thank you, Mayor Larson. We're going to keep moving.
Yeah, I just wanted to tell you one other thing. We were also able to cut some staffing, you know, our traffic control officer staffing, the part-timers for the summer. I think we cut out eight, eight part-timers for the, for the summer season. So that's another savings by using this automated stuff. So that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mayor Larson. Thank you, Ron. This was a This was a very helpful presentation. Definitely educational as to how East Hampton Village uses this, how we might be able to roll this out in the village if we were so inclined and do so in a way to add to the convenience than to the comfort to village residents and visitors alike. And then lastly, I would just add the anecdote that I actually, a few months back, had a lunch with the mayor of Sag Harbor, Mayor LaRocca. And he actually had told me that initially he opposed the rollout of this, but realized that, that after it was rolled out, actually was done quite well and the residents there generally like it. So it seems like it's gotten positive reviews from other neighboring municipalities. The village wanted to wait and see how it would work. And now we have some data and experience, experience and information. So that's a big help. So we'll keep on moving tonight. Thank you, Mayor Larson. Thank you, Ron Ross, for the help.
Thanks a lot.
And have a good night, gentlemen. We'll move forward to our suggested resolutions this evening. We don't have any public hearings or discussion items tonight. So we'll get going and I'll defer this to our treasurer and administrator, showing table bets for the resolutions.
Thank you, Mayor. Suggested resolutions. Resolution number one resolved claims for the warrant due to July 21st, 2022, totaling $83,943.37. Warrant A, warrant A dash six general fund and $187.92 for a A five general payables fund are audited and approved. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Just a quick discussion here. So I've, I've communicated my thoughts regarding the procurement policy to the board. And what we have in front of us, I think, is a good start. I think it's much better than what we have had in the past. One of our objectives was to update our procurement policy, which certainly was not up to today's standards and definitely needed some improvement and refinement. I still would like to do a little more work on this. So I would be essentially fine to adopt this because it's better than what we have, but it's certainly something that I'm not satisfied with. And just wanted to let the board know that because essentially, we've had situations in the past where, for example, a, if there's money in the budget, for example, a trustee liaison could sign off on something. And then all of a sudden, that purchase order is, is, is complete. And we've had some pretty interesting situations in the past where I've, where I've seen a trustee liaison, for example, sign off on very questionable things. So I would, I would like to have more protective measures in place to safeguard village funds. I think this is again, better than what we have and we're moving in the right direction. So I can adopt and improve this today. But I still think we need further work to be done to make sure that our procurement policy is better, even better than what we've now amended it to be. I don't know if there's other comments or questions from board members. I thought we just did procurement.
No, that was, that was one.
I was reading, okay, that was number two. So there's my discussions on the right for more. But as we're on warrants, same, same, same thing here, which is, you know, I really want to make sure that we're, we're continuing to, to safeguard the, the village funds and make sure that this goes hand in hand. Obviously, if there's a, a purchase order, it gets into our warrants. And there are certainly areas where we can improve. I'll discuss that with the, with, with our trustees and treasurer about where we can improve some of the funding or expenditures, just as things get more and more expensive these days. So.
So on the first resolution, which would be the warrant, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number two resolved for trustees adopts the village procurement policy for 2022, 23 as revised. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number three resolved that the board of trustees accepts the donation from the Robins Island Foundation to the South Hampton Village Police Department in the amount of $5,000 and approves the use of this donation for the purchase of two Defender ballistic shields and lights. Now therefore, be resolved, the village, be it further resolved that the board of trustees directs the treasurer's department to make the following budget amendment. Increase A2703 gifts and donations in the amount of $5,000 and an increase to A3120.2 police equipment in the amount of $5,000. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
By the way, just, this, like this discussion, was this, this happened before? Is this, did Robins Island Foundation earmark this for the ballistic shields and lights? Or is this just what we think we need right now?
They send it to us at the discretion of what the chief would like to spend it on. And this was the recommendation of Acting Chief Hurtow.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number four resolved that the board of trustees authorizes the following vehicles' equipment to be deemed surplus at the recommendation of the DPW superintendent and also the head mechanic and sold at the online auction. Parks Department 2005 Chevrolet pickup with 113,386 miles, 386 miles. VIN number one GCHK23U26F130505 and 2007 United enclosed trailer, VIN number 48ETE18277A091580. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Great discussion. Do you know how much we can get for these vehicles?
We don't, we actually, there's an online municipal auction, that website that we use. It's called Auctions International. And we, most of the municipalities across the country use it. And we post them on there. It's almost like eBay Autos and folks bid on them.
Is there a certain amount that we could essentially specify that we'd like to get for these trucks?
The salvage value amount that is kind of deemed by our DPW superintendent and head mechanic, the recommendation of the head mechanic.
Because I'd like to put some controls in place so that we don't just, you know, give these away. For example, if someone's going to pay, you know, $500 for a pickup, I'd say, no, I'd rather keep it and use it for something else. So I don't know what, what they would, would go for. But how can we put in a, is there a minimum threshold?
Well, there's usually a salvage amount or reserve amount.
So that would be?
And that's determined by the DPW superintendent.
So in other words, the market value.
Well, they would, they would say what a scrap value would be. And most of the, the things that are auctioned are usually beyond repair.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Again, I, it depends. I'd like, I'd like some assurances, for example, that the Chevy pickup, for example, isn't, isn't just given away just for scrap value. Definitely has more value than that.
Actually, like I said, I, most of the time we refer to the head mechanic. He's the person that knows the best, what, you know, the amount of work that needs to, to have. And I guess it's an online marketplace. And we've been very successful in, in, I think, getting a pretty good price on most of the items that we sell. We had a lot of experience with it in East Hampton as well. We found that that was the best.
I mean, you're not locked in if you get a low, low walker.
No. Or if you get a walker, you can just take it off and do something else.
Right.
But for the most part, it usually creates a competitive process. So people bid and they can, they can see what the, the current price is as well.
It works almost like the eBay when you, US owner decide what you think is fair and you kind of say, start your price.
And if there's nothing that we withdraw. There's a minimum time that it stays on.
Right, so you have the safeguard, exactly.
Okay, very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number five resolved that the board of trustees appoints Eric Kane to the position of payroll supervisor effective July 21st, 2022. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number six resolved that the board of trustees appoints James Farrell to the position of maintenance mechanic three in building maintenance department at a salary of $62,347.20 effective August 1st, 2022. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Well, you, you can't make the motion.
I know, I was waiting.
I, I, well, prior to this, I'd, I'd like to clarify a few things. Do we have hours for this and, and has anyone interviewed James?
I have read his resume. I spoke to Gary about him. He's an electrician. He's the type of person that we were looking for, for the building maintenance. And we've had many, we've had a few discussions about him. Did I personally meet him? No.
He's a licensed electrician. He was recommended, he, Bob, I believe Bob Hand. And Gary Gillespie both interviewed him and recommended him for hire. And he's been cleared.
And have we, in the past, we've had a situation where we, we are absolutely in need of electricians and we're very happy about this appointment. But have we done our, our background checks? There was a situation where we had another electrician and I asked for background check. I actually did not even vote for that appointment. And, and, but he was hired, but this is before your time and no background check was done. And I would say that everyone really wishes we did a background check.
Well, we don't, currently don't have a policy in place to do background checks for, for DPW employees pre-hire. We would have to have that policy in place. But there is a pre, we do a pre-screen funding drug screening.
Mm-hmm. Which is all done.
Right. And I believe they do a license check on DMP and they also do a license check on the electrician's license.
Wouldn't mind just quickly discussing this in, in executive session to make sure a few, a few hurdles. Now, we actually need to bring an electrician in. We're very happy and very happy about this potential appointment. But we'd just like to discuss a few things with, with the, with the board here. So I'll, I'll make a motion to, to withdraw the, the, the resolution and then we'll, we'll.
To table?
To table, yes. And we'll come back after executive session.
So resolution, motion to table. There's a second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number seven resolved that the board of trustees approves the hiring of Cooper's Beach group attendants at a rate of 1550 per hour effective July 21st, 2022. Julia Asa, Hailey Marsensik and Nellie Nikolova. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number eight resolved the board of trustees approves the hiring of the Parks Department seasonal staff at a rate of $18 per hour effective July 14th, 2022. Isaac Zapp, Brody Dorowska, Adina Ledzima and Xavier Nahy. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number nine resolved the board of trustees approves the mayor or village administrators to sign the retirement agreement for Gary Gillespie Superintendent of Public Works, effective date to be determined by the retirement system, expected to be by the end of August 2022. Is there a motion?
Is there a motion?
That was a motion.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second? Second? All in favor?
A discussion here. It sounds like the, the votes are already there for this retirement agreement. But I just want to say I will not be supporting this for a number of reasons. Basically, when I was elected, I basically said I was going to be looking out for the village residents, looking out for the taxpayers and making sure we were careful with the money that we spent. And in this particular case, I know, understand the terms of this agreement and what, what is going to be offered here. And we have a situation where basically, we've got a number of retirements. These retirements continue to cost the village. And it's up to the village, this discovering body, to make sure that we have the highest degree of fiscal responsibility. And as part of this package, there's going to be a health insurance for life package here. And I have family members who are members of unions. Obviously, it's not a union job here. Some of those family members are teachers, nurses, things like that. And I know that those family members, for example, pay for a small portion of those benefits. And this is something that the village needs to put in place in order to safeguard against these growing list of long-term liabilities. And this is something that the village cannot afford. And it's therefore something I'm not going to be voting for. There's other issues we have. For example, we have former mayors that have health benefits for life. Also something that I do not support. We have former employees who have worked for less than five years, who part of their health insurance is covered. I don't understand a situation where you've got someone who works for three years and then a portion, I mean, they've get health benefits for life that a portion are being covered. It makes no sense to me. We work for the taxpayers. Someone's got to look out for them. I'm going to. And therefore, I'll be voting no on this. So that is my position. Happy to answer other questions from any residents who might have them. I've enjoyed working with Gary. I think he's done a great job on, on, on some of our water quality applications. I, I support his retirement. We may even bring him back if he'd like as a consultant to help us out one day a week. But our board, in my opinion, just needs to do a better job on, on some of these long-term liabilities and some of these contracts moving forward. So that's my position. So I'm going to know it sound like there was three, three S's there.
I'd just like to have a discussion because my understanding is that his contract was even before I, we became a trustee, that things were in place for him. So you're saying that we created that?
In my, in my understanding, this is a non-union position and therefore, there is actually no contract in place. And then therefore, we can have a retirement agreement that, that suits the needs of our village board and village taxpayers.
And moving forward, we are doing just that.
We are.
I don't, there's any other comments or questions from board members?
So I guess we'll have roll call. On the vote, Mayor Warren?
No.
Trustee Arresta?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Stevenson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution number 10. The board of trustees approves the FATA fund to hold a fashion event on Saturday, September 10th, 2022, from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM at Agawam Park. Expecting participants are 1,000 attendees. This event will be pre-coordinated with the building maintenance parks in South Hampton Village Police Department. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second. Discussion?
Discussion?
That's not a thousand people at one time or throughout the course of the day?
Throughout the course of the day.
Okay. Has, has this event ever taken place here in the village? I wonder?
Madam Clark?
Yeah, because I'm not familiar with this.
First time.
Happy to table this if we want to have a little more.
I think that's a guestimate of a thousand because they haven't had this before. I think they're.
Okay.
It's a guestimate.
I'm assuming that it's not like a thousand people are going to come in at one time. So that's the, okay. That, that, that was my only concern with it.
I can't see it even being bigger than what we have for the music concerts.
Okay.
But being a safeguard in there.
I, I just wanted to ask because a thousand people at once, okay?
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 11. Whereas the board of trustees approved the South Hampton Artists Association Art Fair in Agawam Park on Friday, September 16th, 2022, through Sunday, September 18th, 2022, from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Now for, now therefore be it resolved that the board of trustees approves the South Hampton Artists Association to be renamed as the Southampton Art Festival. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 12. Whereas the board trustees approved on Thursday, July 14th, the temporary closure of Joe's Lane between Linn Mill Lane and Main Street for the South Hampton Fashion Week on Friday, August 5th, 2022. Now, time to be determined. Now therefore be it resolved that the closure will take place from 6:30 PM to 7:00 PM. This event has been pre-coordinated with the SVPV, Chief Hurtow, SAC, Joe Diamond and trustee Robin Brown. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Great discussion. Want to push this back a little bit further, maybe 6:45?
Oh, Mayor, what we did, I took a note and you said 6:15 to 6:30. So I took the latter ones to 6:30, but it went back on the note. So I did exactly what you requested.
All right. All right, the hope is just that when we do close the street, we can do it as close to six thirty as possible. Sometimes when we close the streets, we would start going at five. We just want to make sure that the businesses that are especially open until about six PM don't have any of their parking limited. So if it's closed at six twenty-five for a six thirty closure, that's great. But if it's closed at five thirty for a six thirty closure, that might create a little bit of a problem for the business owners. So so long as the businesses have an opportunity to let people park until about six o'clock, we just want to, you know, that would be helpful.
So we went on your advice, and this is working for you to six thirty?
That works. Again, I was reiterating that when we did prior closures. Sometimes we'd get going around five o'clock, even though we said we'd close the streets at six or six thirty, so that was the.
I'm just more concerned, I mean, the business is one concern, but the other concern, it's Friday in August, and we're going to close one of the roads that people use to get out of here. I think people are going to go crazy that they can't drive down Job's Lane trying to get home going westbound on a Friday afternoon at six o'clock at night, which is when their car is backed up all the way to East Jesus. So I think it's got to be held to the tightest possible window of that road being closed. And I understand what you mean, Jess, when sometimes, like for the parade, they're going to close the street at ten o'clock, but they start closing it at nine o'clock to get ready. So I really think they have to minimize the amount of time that the street is closed.
Question. Roy, because you're right down there. Can you advise us and give us some advice on how to expedite that? You know, not now, but later, I'd be glad to.
Well, there's going to need to be a strong police presence at the turn points to direct the traffic which way to go while the road is closed.
Okay.
You know, I'm thinking if we amend this to seven PM to seven thirty, I'm not sure if that's acceptable to the Southampton Fashion Week team, but that might actually buy us a little extra time to let some of the traffic dissipate, even that thirty minutes could be helpful. I don't know if that's acceptable, but does anyone have a problem with that?
Well, we already amended it once, but I still had that same concern last time when we made the First Amendment. Not as bad in August, but I see the Meeting House Lane traffic going down Job's Lane. It is a big exit for people a little bit earlier on Friday nights, not as late as the other evenings. I also don't know how it's going to affect the events.
Well, I would take heed to the words of my trustees, and I just vote Roy, and I understand that the chief is here, and we should get a game plan to make sure that we stay within the timelines that our trustees are requesting. And even if we have to do some type of mock dress rehearsal, we should do that, and that's agreeable, and I'd be willing to do that.
Sure, want to make an amendment from seven to seven thirty?
Well, I'm thinking that exactly what you were saying, Roy, is saying to be mindful of this, you know, both chief in and others, and, you know, stay with the six thirty to seven o'clock.
Right, well, people have to know the ones that turn off a Hampton Road not to go to Meeting House to continue straight down Nugent Street to.
I was just thinking that maybe we could use those speed trailers, they're supposed to be able to put messages on them.
And that'll keep the people going down Nugent and then crossing over, and I think that would be.
Gary and the chief are like that, but I think that they can put messages that flash on that.
Oh, that's a great idea.
Yeah, temporary closure.
Oh, good.
Yeah, that time, I think that would be fine at that hour then.
And we'll have a discussion beforehand, and then we'll, you know, roll it through the trustees for any more good advice like we had just now.
Yeah, I think if people are alerted.
Yes, that's very good.
I think, and they'll stay on Hampton Road to Nugent instead of crossing over before they go down Little Plains or another road and to go to Meeting House.
In fact, we should use those trailers every time we close the road.
Well, they happen, and they're very, very helpful.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number thirteen, resolved that the Board of Trustees approves the Southampton Cultural Center to host a Dance in the Park event in Agawam Park on Sunday, August twenty-first, from four to six PM. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number fourteen, resolved that the village Board of Trustees directs the Finance Department to make the following budget modification for year-end, May thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Transfer from Budget Line A fourteen twenty point one to lost salaries in the amount of fifteen thousand ninety-three dollars and thirty cents, from Budget Line A fourteen twenty point eight oh three, law social security in the amount of one thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars and ninety-two cents. Budget Line A nine oh one oh point eight, employee benefits retirement in the amount of five thousand seven hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighty-four cents, and Budget Line A one nine nine zero contingency account in the amount of forty-nine thousand two oh four point four three, to Budget Line A fourteen twenty point four, law contractual services in the amount of seventy-one thousand two hundred and four dollars and forty-nine cents. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number fifteen, resolved that the Board of Trustees directs the Finance Department to make the following budget amendment for fiscal year five thirty-one twenty-two. Increase revenue A two one one three, building department fees in the amount of seventeen thousand dollars, and increase expenditure, Budget Line A eight zero two zero point four, planning contractual expenses in the amount of seventeen thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number sixteen, the Board of Trustees directs the village finance office to make the attached budget modification, which is a housekeeping entry, transferring between budget lines in each department for fiscal year five thirty-one twenty-two. Is there a motion?
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Quick, Charlie, can you just explain this a bit further here?
Okay, so at the end of the year, after we're finished paying all of our bills, we transfer money, say, for example, in the police department, the supplies line might be over by fourteen hundred dollars, but there's extra money in part-time salaries. We just transfer to clean up the budget lines. So all the departments, you know, underspent, but for the most part, we just transfer money between lines to clean everything up, because when we report to the state comptroller's office, we're reporting that we made the proper amendments as soon as we became aware of the fact that the budget appropriation was overturned.
Is there any particular line items that were over or particular that were under here? And I guess, and my second question is, this is a July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two budget amendment. Is that?
That's the date before the fiscal year-end. It's for fiscal year-end, May thirty-first.
Okay.
Basically, we had a couple of line items that were over, in particular, some equipment items, we had fuel items that were over, that was based on the price of fuel. Utilities, a lot of our utilities were over because of the increased rate of fees we have there, and these were all things that happened during the year. And legal fees, which were in the first resolution we prepared, and in addition to that, we had a lot of engineering costs at the planning board, and I was going to make a proposal to the board in maybe the next meeting that we make, we change our village code to allow for us to charge back planning fees to the applicant. Currently, our code only provides the ability for us to charge back zoning fees, ZBA fees, but we are incurring a lot of engineering costs with the other land use boards as well. So I think that we don't have the mechanism to charge back the applicant for some of those fees.
All right, we definitely should do that. I just, you know, want to stress that, you know, we thank some of the departments or line items for making sure that they were within the allocated budget or under, which is a really great thing. And just want to make sure we're, you know, we, you know, there's just some small things here, but want to make sure we're well within the frameworks for keeping our budget in order, and if we need to increase budgetary line items, we should do that rather than making some of these shifts at the end. Of course, it's not going to be perfect, but, you know, I see some light ends where we're well under, and then those are being obviously shifted towards other areas where we're over. So, you know, thank you to those who are under, and let's get the other ones that are over a little bit more in check.
Okay, so on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number seventeen, the Board of Trustees amends the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three capital budget for the emergency purchase of a Cooper's Beach Gator all-terrain rescue vehicle, as both existing vehicles were now out of commission. And be it further resolved that as there were no existing inventory available, the village was required to purchase an upgraded model of government contract at an amount exceeding the budgeted amount, and approves the additional funding in the amount of twelve thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars, for a total of twenty-two thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars, to be funded from Trustee Special Projects, A ten ten four four three. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number eighteen, the Board of Trustees approves the purchase of bicycle helmets in the amount of five hundred dollars funded by Trustee Special Projects to support the upcoming SYA bike rodeo as part of the village safety initiative. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution, I'm sorry, number nineteen, Mayor Warren respectfully requests a motion to approve the following committee and department designations for the term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Committee liaisons. Budget and finance, trustee Gina Resta. Youth and senior citizens affairs, trustee Robin Brown. Diversity, equity, and inclusion, trustee Robin Brown. Village improvement, trustee Robin Brown. Safety and inspection, trustee William Manger. Sewer district task force, Mayor Warren and trustee Stevenson. Business revitalization, trustee William Manger. Environmental and clean water, trustee Robin Brown. Surf committee, trustee Robin Brown. Parks and recreation, trustee Gina Resta. And dog park, trustee Gina Resta. Department liaison.
I'll make the motion on that.
Motion, and second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And then I'll make a few department liaison designations. Police, Board of Trustees, Mayor Warren will serve as police commissioner per New York State Law Village four dash four hundred, serving New York State Village Law Office four hundred. Justice Court, trustee William Manger. Building, trustees William Manger and trustee Gina Resta. Fire, trustee Roy Stevenson. Ambulances, trustee Roy Stevenson. And then we have Cooper's Beach, trustee Robin Brown, and then Public Works, trustee Gina Resta. And then there is a designation for deputy mayor for trustee Gina Resta as well. So those are the designations there.
So is there a second?
No, those are just designations.
Okay, so there's no.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Resolution number twenty, resolved the Board of Trustees approves Little Lucy Boutique to hold its twenty-first annual pet parade festival on Saturday, October twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two, from twelve PM to four PM. festivities will include a pet parade on Job's Lane, followed by a festival in Agawam Park. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
One of my favorite things.
I'm going to go there this year.
Yeah, it's great, it's great.
Resolution number twenty-one, whereas the village of Southampton herein after local government believes that climate change poses a real and increasing threat to our local and global environments and is primarily due to the burning of fossil fuels, and whereas the effects of climate change will endanger our infrastructure, economy, and livelihoods, harm our farms, orchards, and ecological communities, including native fish and wildlife populations, spread invasive species and exotic diseases, reduce drinking water supplies and recreational opportunities, and pose health threats to our citizens. And whereas, we believe that our response to climate change provides us with an unprecedented opportunity to save money and to build livable, energy-independent, and secure communities, vibrant innovation economics, healthy and safe schools, and resilient infrastructure. And whereas, we believe the scale of greenhouse gas emissions reductions required for climate stabilization will require sustained and substantial efforts. And whereas, we believe that even if emissions were dramatically reduced today, communities would still be required to adapt to the effects of climate change for decades to come. It is hereby resolved that the village of Southampton, in order to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and adapt to a changing climate, adopts the New York State Climate Smart Communities pledge, which comprises the following ten elements. One, build a climate-smart community. Two, inventory emissions, set goals, and plan for climate action. Three, decrease energy use. Four, shift to clean renewable energy. Five, use climate-smart materials management. Six, implement climate-smart land use. Seven, enhance community resilience to climate change. Eight, support a green innovation economy. Nine, inform and inspire the public. And ten, engage in an evolving process of climate action. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number twenty-two, that the Board of Trustees approves the Southampton Village Fire Department to host their annual antique committees chicken and ribs fundraiser at Dozier Park next to Agawam Park on Saturday, August twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, from four to eleven PM. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That concludes the resolution portion.
All right, thank you very much. I will be intending that, sounds delicious, and we'll move forward with comments from board members. I'll start with trustee Resta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I am very happy to be able to continue as liaison to the Department of Public Works to continue many beautification projects and keep the village looking as beautiful as it is and clean, and also love working with the Dog Park Committee, they're just a wonderful group there, and budget and finance, we get a lot done there, and I enjoyed the committee and the committee members as well. And thank you for the reappointment as deputy mayor, I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. Just quickly, the DPW's been very busy painting, and the building maintenance department has been painting the ambulance and basement and first floor, and also repainting all of the village welcome signs, as well as running, they've been running cables to improve the wireless communication with the patrol cars. So as trustee Brown always says, it's safety first. And I guess that's really it. I'm excited to learn more about Hawk Mobile, it's a very informative presentation, answered a lot of questions that I had, and I look forward to continuing working on that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Resta, trustee Brown.
Well, I'm just excited about my assignments for the season. Thank you, Mayor, and I thank you in advance, because I know my trustees are always supportive of ideas they'd like to do, so thank you all, and look forward to working on these projects going forward.
Thank you, trustee Brown. Trustee Stevenson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also appreciate the ability to work with the fire and ambulance departments. Trustee Brown, you indicated to me in some conversation that you would be willing to assist me in that work, and I hope you continue to want to do that, so.
I enjoy working with you. Thank you.
Great. I'm pleased we were able to accommodate the fire department chicken and ribs fundraiser. I know there was a scheduling issue, and the place where they've had it in the past at the Southampton Arts Center didn't work out, so we're able to do that at Dozier Park on the same day. I'd also like to give everyone a heads up that also on August twentieth, there will be a fundraiser at the Southampton Fresh Air Home, a gathering of antique cars, including one of the fire department's antique fire engines. And I spoke with past chief Callahan, and there will be a virtual fire extinguisher and firefighting presentation available for the children if they attend that event on Barker's Island Road on August twentieth to take part in. So I think that will be a big day for our volunteer firemen, both the work at the concourse at the Fresh Air Home, and also the chicken and rib dinner that night. So I hope everybody's summer's going well. It's hot, it's busy, it's crowded, it's Southampton, we love it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, trustee Stevenson. And just a few remarks here. Last meeting, we spoke about traffic concerns, and I wanted to reiterate those concerns as well. I wanted to make sure that I've spoken to our village attorney, Ken Gray, and our acting chief, Hurtow, regarding that, and specifically, I spoke about a few things. But one thing is, I am asking our village attorney to work with our chief of police to come up with a code amendment for us about parking for, commercial parking on the streets, particularly during certain hours such as, you know, three to six, where you've got certain streets that are really jammed up, and what exacerbates that is when you've got these commercial parking, parking all day, or on those critical hours, both in the morning and in the afternoon. And we've got to do something about this, so I've asked our village attorney to work with our chief of police in order to come back to us next month and give us some ideas and some legislation that we could actually put forward to basically help out that cause. That's critical, a number of residents have brought that to my attention, and we're listening, and we're going to do something about that. And then I also had a follow-up conversation with our chief of police, the town chief of police, supervisor Schnarderman, I reached out to the highway department. I reached out to the, uh, Highway, uh, Department and Public Works Department Supervisor over the town. And, uh, we're also gonna work to do something about, uh, Hill Street and Montauk Highway. And then this past week, I also spoke to one of the deputy county executives to get a meeting with the Suffolk County, uh, Highway Department about the lights on County Road 39. Uh, those are all the pressure points here and we're gonna keep on, uh, reaching out to the various organizations. I'm cautiously optimistic about some changes we're gonna put in place. We'll announce those once they happen. But as they say, the squeaky wheel gets the grease. And so, uh, we're gonna keep on reminding and reiterating and partnering with, uh, these groups that we have great relationships with, uh, in order to improve the, uh, quality of life, uh, for our, our residents. And then lastly, as I stated at a prior meeting, uh, we had worked with the state government, uh, regarding an amendment to state law that, uh, currently prohibits speed limits from being village-wide less than 30 miles an hour. But as soon as this law that has been drafted by the Assembly and the State Senate, uh, gets signed, it's all by the governor. We've reached out to the governor's office, we're gonna reach it again. Soon as it's signed into office by the governor, uh, we'll be able to put a, uh, a public hearing together, uh, to lower a village-wide speed limits, uh, to 25 miles an hour. I just see people speeding down the side streets and, uh, this is a, another safety concern. So we are, uh, working for everybody and, and those are some of the highlights of what we're gonna be doing, uh, as we, uh, move into the fall season. And then on a lighter note, I just wanted to remind everybody about the concerts at the park. They're every Wednesday night, put together by the Southampton Cultural Center. Uh, the schedule's online. And then this year, uh, we've got, uh, two, uh, concerts at the park. Uh, thank you, uh, Clerk Kathy Sweeney for reminding me that, uh, Cooper's Beach. So I would encourage everybody to check those out. The schedule's online. If you have any questions, you can reach out to Village Hall as well. But those are great concerts. So, uh, with that being said, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to adjourn the meeting, uh, to executive session to discuss, uh, legal, contractual, and, uh, personnel matters. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, everyone. The time is 6:39 PM. I'll make a motion, uh, to adjourn to public session. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'd like the minutes to show that no action was taken in executive session. Uh, we do have, uh, two resolutions, uh, one from the, uh, prior public session and one walk-on. We'll begin with the, uh, initial, uh, resolution to which, uh, I will, uh, make a motion.
Resolution number six.
Resolution six. I'll make a, uh, a motion, uh, that I, that, uh, I appoint James Farrell, uh, to the position of Maintenance Mechanic Three in Building Maintenance Department at a salary of $62,347.20 effective August 1st, 2022. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Like to make a motion to do a walk-on resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Charlene, turn it over to you.
Um, okay. Uh, whereas Michael Wild is employed by the Village of Southampton as Maintenance Mechanic Three, and whereas disciplinary charges against Mr. Wild for conduct he engaged in on or about July 21st, 2022 are pending. Now therefore be it resolved that Michael Wild is suspended without pay for 30 days in accordance with Section 75 of the New York State Civil Service Law effective noon, July 22nd, 2022.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion, uh, to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.